For July 10th, 2023. And we'll start out with our roll call and introductions.
Commissioner Hussein.
Present.
Commissioner Pika.
Here.
Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Van Haas.
Here.
Commissioner Henches.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Also present is Brad Davis, our Planning Manager. At the end of the podium, next to him is Rachel Nosbush, our Deputy Clerk to the Board. In the audience, I see Marty Schmitz, our Zoning Administrator. And next to him is Greg Wagner, our Senior Planner. And on the other side of Marty is Nathan Hall, our Associate Planner. And Tom Wolf, our County Commissioner, is over here with us as well this evening. Welcome to all. We will now go to our next item, which is approval of the June 12th, 2023 Planning Advisory Commission Meeting Minutes. And all the commissioners have been sent a copy of the minutes. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the June 12th, 2023 Meeting Minutes.
Mr. Chairman, will we approve the minutes as written?
I have a motion by Commissioner Huber. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robbins. Any discussion before I call for a vote? All in favor of approval of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. The minutes are approved. We have nothing on our consent agenda this evening, so there'll be no consent agenda. So we'll move on to the next item, which is our first public hearing. And this is number 2023-042. It's a request for an interim use permit to construct a detached accessory dwelling unit, a D-A-D-U, Daniel and Teresa Sluzesak, our applicants and property owners, in Section 33 of Cedar Lake Township. And Marty Schmitz will be making the staff report. Good evening, Mr. Schmitz.
Mr. Chairman, the public meeting is open?
The public meeting is open at this time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners on the screen, you can see a site location map for the property proposed for the accessory dwelling unit. The property is located just north of 280th Street or State Highway 19, which is actually the southern boundary of the county. It's in Section 33 of Cedar Lake Township. It's located about four, four and a half miles east of the city of New Prague. The property itself consists of about 87 acres. Its own RR1, accessory dwelling units are allowed in the RR1 district with an approved interim use permit. From the map, you can see the parcels to the west and northwest are rather large. These are agricultural parcels. The property to the north and kind of on the east here is part of the Country Hollow Residential Cluster subdivision. Going now to an area photo. So here's an area photo of the property. Again, State Highway 19 on the south, Country Hollow subdivision on the north and east side of the property. The southern two-thirds of the property are, for the most part, agricultural, with the northern one-third being wetlands and woodlands. But home site on the property is located in the center here. It's accessed by about a thousand-foot-long driveway off of State Highway 19. There's a DNR-protected wetland that enters the property here in the southeast corner and exit the property here in the west-central part of the property. The accessory dwelling unit is going to be located in about this area right here. The accessory dwelling unit will be about 225 feet from the stream, which far exceeds our 100-foot required setback. The accessory dwelling unit will be about 600 feet from any property line and about 1,000 feet from any residence off of the property. Here, we're at the site plan for the home place. With the existing house here to the south, the accessory dwelling unit will be built to the north and west of the existing home. The septic system for the home is here. Our Environmental Health Office has reviewed that septic site and determined that it's been sized properly to accommodate both the existing home and the proposed accessory dwelling unit. The applicant has indicated that the accessory dwelling unit will be a place for his kids and grandkids to stay when they're in town, as the existing house is rather small. He also said this could be a future home for he and his wife as they age, and if one of the kids would take over the farm. So that's the intent of the accessory dwelling unit. There isn't an attached garage associated with the accessory dwelling unit. Initially, the applicant's plans are to use that to bottle honey, which is one of his These are building elevations for the accessory dwelling unit. You can see here, it's going to look a lot like a small home on the farm. Again, the farm is 87 acres in size, so it's quite a large property. This is the building floor plan. It will include one bedroom, living, dining, kitchen area, bathroom. This living portion of the building is 796 square feet in total area. Our ordinance allows up to 800 square feet for an accessory dwelling unit, 800 square feet of habitable area. When we look at habitable area, we don't even count the bathroom and hallway, so this is going to be well under that 800-square-foot maximum. The garage will be here. It's about 700 square feet in area off to the side. Cedar Lake Township did not make a recommendation on this request, as it did not have an impact on their township roads, and that's when Cedar Lake chose to make recommendations to this body. So no recommendation from the township. Staff is recommending approval. I don't see the applicant here, but I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Robbins.
So what I gather, then, is the fact that the township didn't make a recommendation is not a bad thing. They only do when it impacts roads, and since this one didn't, they didn't. Is that right?
Yes, Commissioner Robbins, that's exactly right. They just didn't make a recommendation because it's not part of their policy to make recommendations on land use applications unless they have an impact to a township road.
Is the applicant here tonight?
No, I do not see him.
Let me just ask them one other question. Is there anyone going to be living in the house when it's built right now?
I don't think there's an immediate plan for any one individual to live there. It'll be occupied by his kids and grandkids, whoever happens to be in town. It'll be used more as a guest house at this point in time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any other questions? All right, thank you for your report. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to make comments on this application before us, they can come up to the podium. There is a sign-up sheet at the podium, and please start with your name. Seeing as how it does not appear that anyone's coming up to the podium, I'll entertain a motion at this time to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Robbins, second.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Henches. All in favor of vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. At this time, I will entertain a motion for action or further discussion.
Mr. Chairman, based on the criteria for approval listed in the statute, we recommend a interim use permit for Daniel Sluzesak to construct a detached accessory dwelling unit.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by, I have a motion by Commissioner Watson, second by Commissioner Robbins. Is there further discussion before I call a vote on this motion before us? Seeing none at this time, all in favor of the motion, vote aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Vote nay? The motion passes. The next item is also a public hearing, called order of public hearing. Request for number 2023-021, for an interim use permit for detached accessory dwelling unit. Vladimir Shepelov is applicant appropriate in Section 11 of Spring Lake Township. And Nathan Hall will be making the staff report. Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. The subject property is located in Section 11 of Spring Lake Township off of Panama Avenue, surrounded by other, it's a roughly 12-acre parcel surrounded by other similar-sized parcels. To the west, the property is Rice Lake, which is a natural-environmented lake and DNR-protected The property is largely what it is in the Urban Expansion Reserve District. The applicants are requesting an interim use permit to add a detached accessory dwelling unit to the property. And an accessory dwelling unit is a secondary living unit that can be permitted on a parcel for a family member or caregiver to live. In this instance, it is, the applicant is requesting the ADU for his mother-in-law to live with the family on the property. The applicant is proposing a one-bedroom unit. The footprint of it is approximately 1,000 square feet. However, in the previous presentation, the habitable area is, maximum allowed is 800 square feet. And so this unit, once you subtract the bathroom, mechanical room, hallways, those sorts of areas, it does fall within that 800 maximum habitable square feet that is required by Scott County zoning ordinance. The applicant has indicated to staff that when the ADU is no longer occupied by his mother-in-law, it would be converted into a workshop. Scott County Environmental Services has reviewed the request, and they note that the existing system has been designed for the four-bedroom house and would need to be expanded to accommodate the accessory dwelling unit and an additional tank as well for that system. And so the septic system cannot, the building permit will not be able to be issued until that system is expanded and they're meeting environmental health requirements. Spring Lake Township has not yet reviewed this item. They did not have a meeting last week due to the Fourth of July holiday, and the Township Board will be meeting on Thursday, and this proposed accessory dwelling unit is on the agenda. And any conditions stated in the Spring Lake Township recommendation is a proposed condition for this interim use permit. And Scott County staff is recommending approval for the conditions that are listed in the staff report. We did receive some public comment here earlier today, and we may have some of the audience as well, but we did receive an email here earlier that was provided at the very beginning of this meeting. Some neighboring property owners noted things related to noise and what's going on in the property currently. One point of clarification regarding one of the comments, it notes that there is already the two homes, two families on the property. I believe what they're referring to is the other adjacent properties. So there are two adjacent properties here owned by members of the same family that have a shared driveway going to their homes. So I believe that is the other unit that they're referring to. But I'll certainly stand by for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hall.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Watson.
This letter or this note we have in front of us with regard to the unhappiness of these folks that think the area is so noisy, is this a construction company with construction equipment on the land?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Watson, there is not, I believe the applicant may be involved in the construction business. However, there's not an interim use permit on the property to run a construction business. And so if there is a construction business being operated on the property, that is, would be in violation of our zoning ordinance and something we'd have to investigate. However, the letter, I'm not entirely sure if it's referring to all the different improvements that have been being made on the property currently or construction, refurbishments going on the property.
Well, Mr. Chairman, did you have something else?
No, I'm a little confused here.
Yeah, so am I. Are they, how long has this been going on? Did we get the idea that they've been making and building buildings on the property for the last two years? Is that your idea? Is that your sense of it, or is there something we don't know here?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Robbins, the home is just several years old, as is the pool building and the pool, which they did get building permits for. I'm not entirely sure what all the person who wrote this letter is referring to, when they're referring to construction and the work going on on the site.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, Nathan, are either the applicant or the people that wrote this letter here?
I'm sorry, I believe the applicant is not here.
Mr. Chairman, is the applicant here?
No.
Mr. Hall, could the county send a code enforcement officer to verify whether there's a construction company operating there and they require an IUP permit, an interim use permit?
That is, Mr. Chairman, that is something that, yeah, we'll have to talk with our code enforcement officer and see what kinds of actions can be taken.
Thank you. I think that's, a question has been risen from this letter to determine that portion so we can consider the ADU. Are there any other questions for Mr. Hall at this time? We may call you back up here. This is a public hearing. If anyone's here and would like to make comment on this application, they can come up to the podium and sign in and start with your name. Okay, seeing that no one is here to make comment, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Huber, second by Commissioner Henches. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Nay?
Mr. Chairman, can we have some discussion?
Absolutely.
I think we ought to just table this. The applicant isn't here, the people that wrote the letter aren't here. We don't know what's going on on this property, so my recommendation would be that we just get a lot more information before we make any decision.
Good curve.
Mr. Chairman, I'm noticing that the 60-day review period is mid-August, and then we can go another additional 60 days after that if we need it, so we're not running up against the statutory timeline.
So we were invited to an issue with the statutory timeline.
Thank you.
Is the board feeling that as well, the other members of the board?
I agree with Commissioner Henches.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we table this item for further investigation from compliance law folks from this county and see what's going on on this piece of property.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Watson, a second by Commissioner Robbins. Is there any further discussion on this motion before us? Do we have to table it to a date certain, or?
Not a date certain, you can just put a future date.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, maybe we could request that the applicant comes to the hearing also.
Yep, you can make that request.
Yeah.
And you'll make that a friendly amendment to the?
Yes, a friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment, I'll take that.
Commissioner Watson and Commissioner Robbins, do you accept that?
That's friendly, yes.
Commissioner Pika, you want to comment?
Whoever written this letter, could they order?
We can't require him to come, but staff could reach out to them, I'm sure.
She wrote it.
Okay. Any other comments before I call for a vote on this motion before us? Okay, all in favor of the motion at this time, vote aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Nay? Motion passes to table this item and with the information requested on that. Thank you for your report, Mr. Hall. Our next item in the public hearing, a request for conditional use permit amendment to expand and operate an indoor storage facility. Kai Construction Incorporated is applicant, and Lake Marion Mini Storage LLC is property owner in Section 1 of New Market Township. And I see Mr. Wagner is making the staff report tonight. Good evening, Mr. Wagner.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. So the site location map on the screen shows the subject property in Section 1 of New Market Township. This parcel was, or this parcel in the Lake Marion Storage was before the Board of Adjustment. Last month, for variance concurrent with this request, which is to add a third storage building for indoor storage on the property, so this is located south of County Road 29 and on the east side of Pillsbury Avenue, County Road 46. So as we discussed last month, Lake Marion Mini Storage has been operating since the 1990s, originally started with the central building, and then in 2006 amended their conditional use permit to add the southern structure. And then again, in 2016, the northern section of this middle building was added through a CUP amendment as well. Just want to note before I flip to the next couple pages that you can see kind of a pond wetland in the south. Generally, the main concern with commercial industrial development is stormwater management. So I do want to point out that there is a stormwater facility on the very south end that was, I think, installed with the original CUP back in 1999. So the request before you tonight is to add on a third 24,000-plus square foot indoor storage building, which would be on the far north end of the site. As we discussed with the hearing for the variance, the applicant did purchase this lot at 1.8 acres and has since combined that with the property to the south, making a total of 5.8 acres for this site. So the new building will be located on the north end of the site. The lot here is actually slightly wider than the lots to the south when they were originally platted, so it's hard to see, but there's a 12-foot shift further away from the county road right-of-way. So this building will be set back a little bit, and that was part of the variance request that the board heard last month. The site will use the existing driveway, which is basically located on the north end of the central building. That building contains the primary office for the facility. So this building will entirely consist of storage units. So this is kind of an example of what that building would look like, so basically grudge door type units, which are very common to storage facilities. As far as the building goes, it's a storage unit, but the applicant does use, it will be of similar style to the other two buildings, so it will match in color and architectural style. It's composite insulated wall panels, and then they incorporate some contrasting colors, and then the lower section is brick, so they do try and make it look presentable, you know, for a storage building. There would be no restroom or water in this building, so there are no additional employees being added to the property. So the septic system is in compliance. There is a water meter that was installed on the building, so County Environmental Services receives those water meter reports, so there's no need at this point to make any adjustments to the wastewater system. The building, it's not shown on here, but there are security lights that will be installed on the building. Those are the square hooded lights that face directly down, so they do not shine out to adjacent properties, so those are similar in style to what the current buildings have. So I think there's one of the security lights shown on the end of the building right here. So those will not shine onto other properties, they meet our lighting standards. So really, the only outstanding issue is the stormwater management plan, so there was a review memo submitted by the County Natural Resources Engineer, Megan Taska. We've been in contact with the applicant's project engineer, and they are working on revisions to address those concerns. I mentioned the stormwater pond on the far south end. When the northern addition shown here was added back in 2016, an infiltration area was added here to accommodate that additional stormwater runoff. And for this facility, in addition to the building, there will be paved bituminous on all three sides, and then they will be installing a larger infiltration area on the north side of the property that will take, you know, that new stormwater runoff. And basically, they're going to have some drainage channels shown here that will direct all the water runoff into that infiltration basin. So in talking to Megan, our water engineer, it's just a matter of getting the numbers to work, so there are no real significant issues with the stormwater management plan that would be of concern to staff that the applicant and his engineer cannot address. So staff is recommending approval, subject to those items being finally addressed. And the applicant did attend the New Market Township Board meeting back in June to get a recommendation on the variance, but then in talking to the township clerk last week, that recommendation also was for the conditional use permit, so the township is also supporting this request. The applicant is here, and I would stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wagner. Any questions for Ms. Wagner at this time? Commissioner Hussein.
I, it's just a comment about the drainage system. I would urge you, I'd like to satisfy with the drainage system because of the crucial point, the strategic location of this building, and because it's at the, almost at the roundabout. So I would say, looking at the weather and sort of, you have lots of snow, that drainage system is quite important.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hussein, yeah, that, like I said, we reviewing with Megan, our engineer, and we've been in contact with the project engineer, so they fully understand the changes that they need to make to make that work, so.
Any other further questions for Mr. Wagner at this time? Okay, thank you for your report. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to make a comment on this application before us, they can come up to the podium. There is a sign-up list, and you may start with your name. Seeing that no one's coming up to the podium, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Henches, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Pika, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed at this time, entertain a motion or discussion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, based on criteria for approval listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of the conditional use permit amendment for Lake Marion Mini Storage LLC, Gary Miller, applicant, to add a new indoor storage building, noting that this recommendation is subject to the conditions. It must be satisfactory address prior to county board consideration of the project, and noting that the town board has recommended approval.
I have a motion by Commissioner Huber, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robbins. Any discussion before I call for a vote on this item? Okay? At this time, all in favor of the motion before us, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, vote nay? Motion passes. At this time, we'll move to our Planning Manager update, and I'll go to Mr. Davis for that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Based on your recommendations, two items went to the county board for final approval back on June 20th. The board did approve the rezoned preliminary final plat of Smogard Oaks that created three lots on 12 acres in Spring Lake Township. Also that day, they approved the CUP, the conditional use permit, the preliminary plat, and the solid waste license for the organic recycling facility, Shakiba Meadow Walkin Sioux Community is the applicant. So that project did get approved, and I think the final plat and the developers agreement are on the agenda tomorrow for approval, so that project was approved, and I think they had a ribbon cutting last week. That's it for an update.
Okay, and our next item is going to be our?
I have a question.
Oh, yes, Commissioner Hussein, do I?
Yep.
For Mr. Davis.
I'm asking you, but the possibility of how we could get a speedier internet connection over the county. I see that the state is giving lots of, is spending lots. So how can we use that, those funds?
Yep.
And get the county residents a speedier connection?
Yep. The county did invest a lot of money about two years ago through some of the federal funds that came down, CARES funding, to specifically improve broadband service down in some of our southern townships. Blakely Township was one township that I think got a lot of, some investment in. We do have someone on staff that strictly deals with fiber and broadband, his name is Perry Mulcrone. So I'm going to get you in touch with Perry, because Perry could tell you exactly kind of what the plan is for additional coverage here in the county. So after this meeting or tomorrow, I'll get you in touch with Perry.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Another question. Another question is, who is responsible for setting up the curriculum of the schools?
The, which, the what are the schools?
The schools, not like a high school. Who sets up the curriculum?
The school board.
The school board.
Yep, yep, county doesn't have any involvement.
Yeah, because I saw some report that our governor is quite interested in having taught computer courses at lower level, at high school level, and we are not doing it here. So I would, I would just see that we can make and like start, we can initiate something that could do that.
Yep, a lot of our school districts too have kind of point people on broadband and internet, so that too is, I think Perry could get you that information, or I'll also check where we have some contacts in our school districts.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Chair, you're right, we do have a workshop right after this. We'll meet in the conference room next to us, and we're talking about zoning response to the cannabis legalization, and so we'll talk through that.
Okay, great, thank you very much. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Robbins, second by Commissioner Pika. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
And we'll go to our workshop this time. Thank you very much.